For the public comment period tonight, if you're here to talk about the fee schedule, if you can wait with your comments until we open that public hearing for that, the regular public comments would just be for anything else. So, I don't have the...
Do you also want to turn up? How do you know?
Oh, yes, and if you're here to talk about the Gulf contractor, that, I'm going to suggest that that be tabled because we're going to have to review the process.
Can you elaborate on that?
I don't.
At that time, yes.
You think that was right after? Why you have to review the process?
When we get to that item on the...
Oh, okay.
Yes. I don't have a game. Okay, Gerald Hughes.
Yes, congratulations on you in advance, I guess. I'm quite certain our cities is good hands right now. And I just want you and council to know that I am faithful to the decisions we're going to make.
Okay. Are you on?
Mike coming up with someone back.
Okay. Mitchell Mosley?
Yes.
You have time to be on? Okay. Tim West?
All right.
Is anybody on Zoom that has any public comments? All right, moving on. Reports, police? Flyers, not you. City administration?
I didn't prepare an agenda.
City engineer?
Yeah, um, I have a bit of a book in front of you guys with the two-page explanation of our relicensing process to the dam. Um, it's a flyer that HBR put together for us, which is a consultant on my effort. So, I just wanted to get that to you for your review. Um, that's the only update I have. So, finally, is there any questions or demands?
When will that be released?
The licensing process is about a five-year process from this point forward, so, um, there's going to be, um, you know, a lot of work for the next five years. It's just going to be...
Has to be completed by then or later?
Yeah, there's actually a date when we're going to need that service in part of it. So, that and the, uh, HBR, the consultants very aware of the time under that.
Urban renewal? Spot? No comment. Okay. Anybody from Gulf? U C? Moving on to the consent agenda?
We've changed before, we can approve the consent agenda, so we need to take on the land sale option off of the, of number four because we don't have minutes for the land sale option on eight twenty-three twenty-three. And just to clarify, as long as we're meeting, that's about, it's just a conclusion that it's always to, those are meeting, that doesn't mean it's just a sale that we accept of. Other than that, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second? Seth? Motion made in second? Brian?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Well?
Yes.
Okay, new business. As most of you know by now that, uh, our mayor Dick Staples resigned on the twenty-second, so we are looking to fill the appoint, fill the mayor's position with appointment, and we need a nominee or a motion from city council in order to do that. Do we have anybody who would like to make a motion?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that Rick Alonso fill the vacancy in the office of mayor for Dick Staples' resignation.
Can I second it?
Motion made in seconded. Brian?
Yes.
Well?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Thanks, Al.
Good morning, Rick.
I need those positive remarks.
Right now, I'll have to take you to the office.
I will. I will.
Okay, the next item up is, now that I'm the mayor, we have a vacancy on the council, and it's the mayor's duty to recommend a person to fill that position. And I was fortunate enough to, uh, get Adam Arthur to agree to come back to fill out the rest of my term, so Adam, if you will, come to the front. What about applications? There is no application process for...
That's per statutes?
Uh, per statute.
Thank you, sir.
Fifty-seven zero four.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yes, and it doesn't have to be a motion. I don't believe so. The mayor, well, we can have a motion for the council to approve my nomination.
And I, can you clarify that again, sorry?
Yes, that's correct. So, the mayor makes the recommendation and the council approves the recommendation. So, um, I would suggest that you have a motion to approve the mayoral, uh, appointment, and then I will call the...
I make a motion that we approve the mayoral appointment. Adam Arthur as the council member to replace Rick Alonso.
Second? May we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Brian?
Yes.
Well?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Thanks, Al.
Good morning, Rick.
I need those positive remarks.
Right now, I'll have to take you to the office.
I will. 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 Okay, the next item up is, now that I'm the mayor, we have a vacancy on the council,
and it's the mayor's duty to recommend a person to fill that position. And I was fortunate enough to, uh, get Adam Arthur to agree to come back to fill out the rest of my term, so Adam, if you will, come to the front.
What about applications?
There is no application process for...
That's per statutes?
Uh, per statute.
Thank you, sir.
Fifty-seven zero four.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yes, and it doesn't have to be a motion. I don't believe so. The mayor, well, we can have a motion for the council to approve my nomination.
And I, can you clarify that again, sorry?
Yes, that's correct. So, the mayor makes the recommendation and the council approves the recommendation. So, um, I would suggest that you have a motion to approve the mayoral, uh, appointment, and then I will call the...
I make a motion that we approve the mayoral appointment. Adam Arthur as the council member to replace Rick Alonso.
Second? May we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Brian?
Yes.
Well?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Now, Adam, if you will come up. Raise your right hand. I, Adam Arthur, I do all swear or affirm that I support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Idaho, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of council for the city of Bonn, as far as you're best in my ability to. Okay, number seven on the agenda was we were going to talk about nominating for a council president, but we're going to table that until Ron returns from his vacation and Brian comes back and he has to have the full council here to do that. Do I need a motion for that, Andrew Cape?
No, you don't need a motion to table it. You can simply just table it to the next agenda.
Okay, now comes the time for the public hearing for the purpose of taking public testimony regarding the additional or increased fees and to explain the reasons for such fees or increases described by section sixty-three dash fifteen eleven A of the Idaho State Statute. The public hearing is now open.
Mr. Eric Cape, would you please present a short presentation which will be the summarizing the notification as important as paper?
Oh, what is?
So, each year, the council has, uh, a direction to staff to bring forward any fee modifications as it results to the Idaho budget making process or as a review of our fees. It's a commitment the council has made, and we've been successful in nominating this for at least the last three years. So, during the budget workshop, uh, in particular, there are some discussions about our electric and utility rates, which I'll cover in a moment, but staff did hold a public workshop with council during, uh, when we had the opening, uh, from sales and the Congress, uh, and then published the reading terms of how to rule. In particular, the requirement of the law is any new fees or any additional fees that are accessified personally are required to be modified of the public of those rate increases and changes. So, I will cover quickly those, uh, and as councils around, we have a table of fees and those are broken up into multiple tables as it relates to the particulars of that fee. So, with respect to the first table amendment, we are building permit fees, staff is requesting an amendment to our building permit fees to represent for two thousand and eighteen, International Building Council's adopted by motion sheet and establishing building permit fees. The, uh, a new fee, which actually isn't quite a new fee, is just a representation of a fee that we would charge by the State of Idaho regarding building permit, labor fee fees. The, uh, and then the additional new fee, which is a building permit for a re-roofing home, that was concerned policy, and we discussed that there is a potential that planning is only had an additional fee, and I couldn't recall at that time. And in that discussion, we, I learned from the player, we have a counter plan, or that when we look at building, re-roofing for building permits for re-roofing, excuse me, sometimes the valuation of those doesn't necessarily represent the cost of processing. So, we are reducing that fee to more aligned with what the true cost of service would be, so it's a flat rate fee. So, for example, uh, it's based on evaluation, and I have thirty thousand dollar increase to your construction value and fees based on that, this would just affect the, this just represents, uh, essentially is one. The next change in the, uh, tables would be table four, utilities. This is also an addition, uh, did not come out of the workshop, it was again, it came as a result of that, and the city has a right-of-way, building of a right-of-way permit or any and all we've done for the right-of-way. And then, uh, in the course of application that we found that the fee might be not representative of the actual charge of service for certain types of permits. So, if somebody's putting in an approach permit, they certainly have reason to, to charge like two ninety dollars for us to go out and move that and watch the course of that approach with, with eighteen months, including the duration of the street. But contrary to that, what we don't necessarily have would be representative permit for smaller amounts of work, so including mailbox, that would be on the same right-of-way. And so, staff working with, and this came out now in light of the school disruption too, is putting up the arms that, the needs for value school, women closing the street during school day, that they needed to apply for a permit because they were quoting something within the city right-of-way that wasn't representative of the scene as an approach permit. So, staff has established a new fee which will be a part of the application process and review those in return. Then we move to table five, the nearly all course fees. Uh, staff, we're working with council at the workshop, and the mayor at the time requested a five percent increase across the property, so this is not something that requires a public hearing in order to do, but it was advisable, and so we can, uh, and then the next table, table six, which is our city properties, staff is suggesting the council agree to look at, uh, an increase of five dollars to the swin lessons to offset the additional pay that we're charging by parts in the cost of, so we go from fifty dollars to fifty dollars. Then we move on to the utility rates, and I start with, um, the easier ones, the garbage rate as part of the budgeting process. Frederick Sings reached out to the city about increases of their costs being requested as we come to five percent rate mandates. That was put in the notification, again, not required, but advisable, and acknowledge that really was pursuant to this process, the federal campaign process. Uh, the sewer utility rate and the water utility rate too, also increases to all customer classes at five percent. And really, this is in line by collect council, directed, and Mike, who's here, can we speak for it, to the policy that was adopted by council to try and match increases related to, uh, inflationary costs. So, uh, during budget, we talked about looking at twelve percent rate of inflation from the whole month period from March, first season, we're winning. And so, staff's really trying to hold, hold, actually less than the inflation rates during that same time period, but still advisable since we're seeing greater than five percent increases across our back sector, especially relates to equipment or, so. And then I'll jump to the electric one, which will be the last one to talk about for the public comment portion, in that the electric utility rate table, council recalls and did adopt a resolution, uh, after we formalized our cost of service analysis in the form of a resolution to council that looked at five percent rate increases across all three classes in order to keep up with our increased cost of providing that service. In particular, council recall during the budget workshops as well as our fee study workshops, that we're seeing greater increases with E P U purchase power, and we saw ten percent of, uh, new work here during this time, so somewhere as quickly, uh, E P U's tier-two power as well as our power is, we're moving up, and as, as much as ten percent this next year, Mike can see, directly to that thing is asked to do so. Uh, we also, uh, have a pretty aggressive capital plan that is year over year, so several ways cost related to the, in particular, the projects that are already started, and cost increases that were unanticipated with some of the current projects, but using for staff to recommend a seven percent increase. Council suggested to staff that we would go ahead and refer with the five percent increase and we reassess and we look at that number. So, with that, I'm happy to answer your questions. I do have the consideration of the resolution that I'm putting on the screen, and I wish you to see that's part of the cost of service analysis, and for a number of new things in the works, I think we have, I stand for questions.
Is that going up here?
What do you want me, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you want me to do that, so I didn't.
I see you picked up your...
Sir, I started to, and say it's a lot more. Unfortunately, it won't show up for the council members who are zooming in, but this would be the resolution, um, that adopted the suggested rate increases when we approved our cost of service analysis. So, you'll see that the single phase and three phase, the suggestion was looking at that five percent rate increase, um, so this, again, was those proposed rates as adopted in the resolution. Example questions?
So, essentially, what we're saying, E P U rates raised ten percent, staff recommended seven, seven percent, cost of services.
The commitment that council made to staff was that we'd reevaluate mid-year and see how our, essentially, what, what we want to do is look at our costs, uh, expenditures are keeping pace with our revenue, uh, we will likely see a downturn for a couple of months into the fiscal year, but we're a weaker peak in utilities, so it's hard to see, maybe even mid-year, we might not have a full balance of what that black, um, revenue might be, it might be closer to the end of the, uh, fiscal year, but we'll see the growth. That was our, at least our comment to council, to the workshops.
Mike, could you just talk about, a little bit about the B P A rates?
Sure, yeah, when Lisa mentioned the tier-two rates, I can explain a little bit about that. Tier one is kind of like in the water, where you have a base, where you pay an ex amount for up to seventy gallons, and then after that, you have an overdrate. Well, for the city, our base volume of power that we could use is five point three megawatts before we start getting the, any of the overdrain. So, what happened to the overdrate is the, for each megawatt hour, we go over that five point three. It's, instead of being thirty-two, I think it's, it's a, right to October first, it was thirty-two dollars megawatt hour. Starting October first, it went up to sixty-three, so it almost doubled. So, I looked at our bill from last month, and if we would have that same bill in October, our, our bill would have gone up about fifty or sixty thousand dollars. So, I'm expecting we're going to see that kind of increase in our, uh, B P A bill, which makes approximately fifty thousand dollars, so it's a big hit.
Now, it's time for public comments. Dave Ray, did you wish to speak?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Building council, Mr. Mayor, you mind if I sit?
No, that's fine.
Okay, I would, uh, I get it and understand it, what's going on, but I'd just like to talk to you about social security people. I'm on social security than they are. Social security is going to get a five percent increase in October, and that comes out to about fifty-four dollars a month. So, if you take fifty-four times twelve, we figure it out. And then down at the bottom, Medicare Part B, with the insurance that people have, that's going to go up to one hundred and seventy-four eighty. So, each month that I get my social security, one hundred and seventy-four eighty is taken out of that times twelve, and that's up a total of nine dollars and ninety cents. So, I just want to let you know that the possibility of rate hikes going up, today went up to twenty-nine percent, they might raise rate hikes again, talking about recession coming up, gas prices raised, uh, from four nineteen to almost four fifty-five this week in terms of driving alone, and so I go through the games, and the gas prices are crazy, the prices are crazy, things are going up and out of sight. So, if people are on fixed incomes and dealing with monetary policy that the Fed is using, we could see some really, really disastrous economy situations. And the final thing here, social security colas are tied to the Consumer Price Index for urban wage earners and clerical workers, measure a monthly price change for selection of food, energy, and other things, and we all know what housing interest rates feel in food and stuff. And I just thought I'd let you know what's going to happen with social security, not much. There you go.
Thank you. David Muir?
Daniel Muir.
Okay, all right.
That's all right. Um, I just have a few questions for the council in regards to the rates going up, especially in regards to electric. Since twenty nineteen, our rates went up nine and a half percent, and then in twenty-twenty, the bond was, was voted on, passed, get back over the, let's see, next twenty years, and then, uh, Idaho's report recently, uh, law that came out saying that the rates that are generated from the local dam, we're going to have to use to, to pay a brother's risk for the, the city's general fund, against the bond tax, which we voted on in the past, for these additional funds that are not able to fund other areas, and we're seeing another five percent increase, that's fourteen and a half percent for four years. You know, that's, you know, we said we didn't increase our rates for nine years, or ten years, it was nine and a half, down to five percent. And what you just painted for me, that was a picture from the rates go for, it's a lot of a power situation. What's our forecast of like on this? Are we going to be taxed again next year, or rates go up another five percent? I mean, at what point are we going to keep getting taxed and keep getting taxed, or what's that going to?
Unfortunately, we don't have, uh, we don't, we can't necessarily predict what B P A just want to charge us, uh, when they, when they raise that rate. We don't know that they're, that they're willing to do so. Um, and I don't know that, that it's even, can we even really predict that, Mike, easily?
They, they give indications, and we have two-year contracts with them, so there is some, um, forecast of what's coming. Um, one of the wild cards is, is water, you're saying we have, we have water years, and we have, so, we're able to offset a lot of our costs through hydro, um, but...
But we do have, but we do have that agreement as council, that we will be, that we will be increasing that five percent so that we can take care of the cost of, uh, the capital payments that we have to do in order to improve the, you know, the square, sorry, for the utility itself, yes. I was going to concur, that maybe we can, uh, hear all the questions and then respond, so at the end, that way we can through the process, right? I don't know if Mr. Daniel has any other questions to...
That, that's all then.
All right. Eric Letteroff?
I didn't ask to speak.
Okay. Tim West?
Um, so, I've got some questions, probably to you, Lisa, on these, uh, fees, uh, for right-of-way, for, right-of-way, quote, import fees for, 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 so, those are going up for what reason?
They're actually not going up. We're just creating a new fee for, to deal with smaller merchant routes or headwinds on the street that we need to, like mailboxes, or in this case, the some gates that the school district plan put in. So, it's a new fee, just asking, that doesn't require that the applicant pay a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar application for a smaller, or smaller merchant, excuse me.
You want somebody to pay two-hundred-and-fifty dollars?
For, for a driveway, that's already a fee, that fees are an increase, but the, but it would, it wasn't distinguishable between a driveway and a mailbox, and so we're trying to provide a separation of those two since they act different, and that our cost to do that is different, so it's not, this is necessarily cost two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, but staff's time to review a permit for a mailbox, but a driveway approach that we're going to maybe watch for the next eighteen months to make sure it doesn't damage the shoulder of the street would have any repercussions for that.
And what do you, what do you do for that two-hundred-and-fifty dollars if you, if you say it's going to damage the street? How are you going to damage the streets that we've got?
Yeah, and so, when you tie into a street, you, you, if there, you have a culvert that fails, for example, or you have a shoulder that wasn't, uh, compacted correctly, or something like that, you'll be watching to make sure there's no damage to the actual street as they tie into it.
Okay, and this re-roofing fee, what is that about?
So, the...
You can't do maintenance to your house, got to get in charge for it?
So, the Department, uh, International Building Council has a requirement, and we've adopted the International Building Code, that we're required to have a building permit for a re-roofing, and the way our fees are set up, they're fee-based, the building permit is fee-based service, and that fee-based service is supposed to be reflected in the, the cost of new inspections, and for the most part, we track those pretty closely. Our coverage of those is about, we have about a four percent amount that's left over at the end of cover of the city, so, but with re-roofing fees, there's really no inspections, and so when you look at the cost, we're actually establishing a lower fee than what the building permit required because it doesn't have a representative inspection outside of, maybe the, um, if, if you're tearing it down to the membrane, it's not a building inspection.
That's a maintenance fee. That's not, that's not a new building. That's just like putting siding, reciting your house, it's like painting your house.
Again, it is, it's not, it's not a, it's not a new fee that the city is putting in place to do, it's a, it's a requirement of, that we're already doing, we're just trying to give a, a representative cost for it.
Cost for what? What are you doing?
Yeah.
What do you do? You, you charge us a fee to re-roof our house, and then you do nothing. You come and inspect it, make sure it's done right?
Correct, the, the state...
Do you?
The state would be doing that.
Really? Has the state ever come out and inspected a roof?
They have, yes.
Uh-huh. Okay. So, if I put new siding on my house, the state going to come and inspect it? Because it's not any different than putting a roof on, it's maintenance.
They would, yes, they would be on your, your roof.
But what I'm saying is, if we recite our house, it's the same thing as re-roofing. If we tear it down to the membrane, put new siding on, I mean, this is just maintenance. Why are we charging people a maintenance fee for it?
But if the state comes and inspects it, why is the city blocking the fee?
But there you go.
Yeah, we don't keep the fee, it goes to the state. But we are just abiding by what the International Building Code, which we, uh...
We adopted.
...adopted, so what they say, we have to do, so.
So, you adopted this, why?
Sorry, what?
You adopted the International Building Code, why?
I think it was adopted decades ago. Yeah. So, I, I think we just followed that, it's been, it's in our own intis that we, we probably...
So, it's been around forever.
Okay, well?
That's correct.
But people don't always get permits to re-roof their house, so...
I don't know if they're following the law, or if...
Like, they're calling the city, the city's advising them that the International Building Code requires a permit. We are administering a permit. And the, the fee is really about reconciliation of the actual cost of service versus our previous rule of doing that, which is based on the actual improvement value. So, if the thirty-thousand value increase on the building permit resulted in a five-hundred-dollar building permit, for example, that's not necessarily representative of the work that's being done, so we're capping that at, uh, now, at the median value.
I, I just want to say, as a reminder to the council, when you bring in new laws, um, codes, remember when you're allowing outside entities like the government, federal government, international, this is what happens. Mr. West is one-hundred percent correct. It's not their business what we do on our property.
So, I mean, I've talked to several contractors and several people recently that have gotten things done. Some contractors never get a permit, and they never get inspected. Nobody says anything. Somebody gets some work done, and then the city says, "Oh, they do work for us, we know what their work is like, so we're not even going to come and inspect it." Yet, we're still paying a fee. So, it's just, what are you doing for these fees? And how much is a, how much is a building permit? What's the fee on that, to build a new building? Or to do an addition?
Yeah, it's very, I'd be happy to, Mr. West, to meet with you and talk through our building permit process, what the fees are, how they derive. I wasn't prepared tonight to meet you.
Well, how, I mean, you know, how are they derived?
They're, they're based on, uh, dependent on the type of construction. If it's new construction or some additions, it's, it's valued, based on the value of the, the value of the structure.
So, it's really none of your business how much we're putting into it? We should pay a flat fee for a building permit? So, if we want to build a fifty-thousand-dollar addition, how much is that going to cost us?
I'm not prepared to answer that.
Yeah. Well, you know, Lisa, I mean, you do this...
I, I do not, actually. We contract that service hours, so I couldn't tell you.
It really does really quite, yeah.
But see, this, this is what the problem is. Here, we've got all these things raising. You've got people like Dave there that's on social security, and everything's raising, yet you want to charge us fees for doing stuff where it really doesn't make a difference, or it's really none of your business if we put a new roof on our house. And it's none of your business how much we're paying for something. If somebody wants to put a hundred-thousand-dollar addition on their house, if somebody wants to put a ten-thousand-dollar addition, why does that make a difference on the permit? If you come out and inspect it? The, the amount of what it's costing? If I want to do a fifty-thousand-dollar addition, and I cut all my own lumber and use it, are you going to charge us for what the lumberyard would charge us for that lumber? I mean, uh, well, that's just...
And that would be something that I would suggest that, like Lisa said, if you want to meet with her and discuss it, she can show you how all these fees and generally where they go. Because it's not like the city is collecting it, because...
Then where's it going?
It goes to the people that actually do the inspections and the state.
Okay. If they don't come out and inspect, then we shouldn't have to pay, right? They, they didn't come out and inspect it, so why are they giving money?
Were you mandatory to require to do the, um, federal regulations? Or was that an option that was voted in? I mean, this is serious. We're adding these federal regulations, and then ten years down the line, you, you guys are having to answer for what they did ten years ago. We should really think about adding federal regulations that are not required. We should really put a heavy thought into it before we vote.
Well, we haven't added anything in a long time, I mean...
I'm not blaming you, sir.
Well, I know, I'm just saying that it's, it's been this way forever. So, it was like this when Dave was on the council. And it's been like this, I've been on the council for twelve years, and happened way before now. Some of these points I can't answer.
So, I'm just on a tangent tonight because we just passed the lock fee, and Lisa came in our living room with a bunch of people and said, "Wow, this one percent should cover more than cover anything that comes up." And now, we're raising rates.
I was junior living room that night.
Yeah.
And we're kind of getting off on a tangent here, but the local option tax was to cover the money that we lost by not being able to do balance transfers from the utilities that helped with the general fund. Idaho State Department courts said we couldn't do that anymore. So, right now, we're short almost five-hundred-thousand dollars a year that we have to make. So, that's what the local option tax was.
Right. But part of that is the electricals bill, or...
But in all the rates that you just brought up, we actually, those are lowered. Now, the reason why there's even a change is it was reduced for the cost of service. So, the building permit fee for the roofing, that's reduced. And so was the, um, so was the putting of the mailbox fee, the driveway fee for that. That was reduced from two-hundred-and-fifty. So, we're trying to reduce the cost. No, previously, it would have been two-fifty, and now it's fifty. So, we're trying to reduce costs, and, and that was part of what we're doing there.
Would they actually put in applications for two-hundred-and-fifty dollars for the mailbox, or they just do it all the time?
Well, that's why we created it, because, so there wouldn't be a thing because it was, um, it came up with this board. When I put down the...
And we've got a neighbor that's, that was told that they had to get an approach permit to tear down an old building that's on the street. That has had an approach since before you and I were even here. And they had to get an approach permit to go in there and tear it down. So, I'm just a little upset over these, these fees for nothing. And this has got to stop. I mean, this is, I don't care if you got some International Building Code, if I got to do maintenance on my roof, I'm just going to do it. I'm not going to come and ask you if I can do it to my house. If I'm going to re-roof my house, I'm going to do it. I'm not going to pay you a fee to come and tell me that I can do it. If I'm going to landscape my yard, I'm not going to come and ask you for a permit to do it. This is not an HOA. I'm done.
Thank you for your time. And do you wish to speak, Lisa, or you just...
No, I'm, I'm good. I, I agree with the law, what he says. However, we feel like, especially being from here, we don't feel like the growth coming in, it should be sustaining some of this stuff and offsetting it. I think the locals that are on set incomes and live here all their life are getting hammered, and we can't, we can't do that. We work our finger to the bone to maintain what we've got now. And yet, we look at these fees for permits because we want to improve our home, and we're going to cut our lumber and be frugal, and then you get nickels and dimes to death. And, uh, we've been reprimanded. We didn't even know permits. Way back. And we were on our spare eyes. We didn't know. And we bought the house next door, and we pulled out weeds and a little bit of lawn, and it was patchy. And we dug it out with the excavators, the weeds, and we filled it with gravel. But that's changed in the grain, uh, drainage control. It didn't do a thing. It didn't change. And Tim knows what he's doing, he's a contractor. So, it's kind of wishy-washy. And friends have got hammered with permits on the value of their rent. And I don't think that's right. It's really nobody's business. However, on the other hand, I understand we need to have inspections and permits because you're trying to keep things safe and, you know, sound. We should have been doing this a long time ago, enforcing it in a way. But I think it's getting out of hand. I mean, they're raising the taxes, and the utilities are what they are. We have to look at that. But it's just too much change, too quick, especially for people like Dave. So, I don't know where it ends. It's pretty scary.
I didn't put my name, obviously, but I had a quick question. I thought maybe you could answer. On this International Building Code that's, and they're forever, curiosity here is, things like a fee for replacing a roof, are those all a fee that's always been there? Or do they, do they have to follow, like, the city? If it's upgraded in a five percent increase, they have to, they have to somehow put it out there to the public? Or do they just pick a number and raise it when they want to?
Yeah, I have no idea.
Do you want me to answer or do you have the answer, or...
Yeah, that'd be funny.
I'll answer.
Okay. Thanks.
Is there anybody on...
My name is not on the list, but may I make that quick comment?
Sure.
So, you know, in regards to the permits, I mean, we get these, they get inspected. If a roof fails, does that mean they're going to stand behind the roof? If they're inspecting it? I know the answer to that, I know it's no. I built a new house in twenty-nineteen, went through my due diligence, went through Panhandle Health, had my second permit, hold twelve-hundred dollars. I inspected it, said, "It's in a blessing, it's good." Then, four years later, who stands behind it? No one. I have five medical permits. For what?
It's the same with electrical inspections and all that. All that inspection means is that they looked at it. It doesn't mean that...
Right, they want to do the same process, putting in double, like...
Yeah.
Pay your fees, and hopefully get the people that look at it and know what they're doing when they inspect it, and put their standard to the roof on.
Exactly.
And we're told that there is, I don't know who it is, but it's a contractor in town that is building new homes and not putting a bit of insulation in these homes. Where is the inspector on this? The homeowner gets stuck with that. And it's not right. If they're inspecting, where are they? That's the wrong, there's just no, um, integrity in this system. If they're going to charge, then make sure they're adequate and right and safe and done right.
We're going to pay for inspections, we didn't inspect.
Is there anyone on Zoom that wanted to make a comment on this fee schedule? And then I'll let Lisa answer the question.
Just, just, so, what can we go back? The, the question we have, who involved in all this, that he and Dan has covered that, that wasn't going to the general fund? Where's, where's that money going now?
Goes into normal operating expenses, capital improvements.
This is going to Dan, correct.
It, it goes into the electric department, it covers anything electrical. So, not just the...
You ready, Mr. ...?
I'm ready.
So, with, with regard to the building permit fees, I, I want to be clear that the city does do inspections and do issues of their occupancies. And our strategy of those required inspections as it relates to the International Building Code, which we adopted, the city has adopted. Uh, the county does not do that. And I think there is a lot of unknown about where those lines are and where those inspections have been done. But I can tell you, and I'd be happy to share with any of the publicists here tonight, those building permits in which we issue such a real occupancies, that have to be the minimum requirements of the National Building Code, as well as the commercial code and any other adopted code that we adopt, that we put in place. With respect to the fees, the fees are set, uh, it's used primarily to support the service that they're receiving. And I've given this report to council in the past, and to a number of new council members here tonight, when we take out the fees that the, we get charged by the state of Idaho, who does those inspections on our behalf, and the planner who reviews the permits and quotes available with the land use laws, there is about a four percent, on average, difference in our favor that covers the city's administrative staff to take in the permit, administrate the permit to those contractors, issue a C E O, etc. So, really, when you look at it, the fee is covering itself. It's a fee generating service, so only those who are requesting a permit are paid. As far as the, the questions, the sort of intertwining of the local option tax and whether or not it was going to cover everything, I, I believe, I never once said, nor do I think council said that the local option tax would be for all building services. It's intentless to cover the services that we are going to lose that were generated, uh, supported by tax dollars. And by that, I mean property taxes. You know, if council wishes to go back and look at whether or not you want to administrate the building code, that is a decision for future days, not for today. The question by Mr. Lederhoffs about the International Building Code and the cost, the, uh, again, I'd be happy to hear about that process, how it's set up, but it's all based on a valuation of the property. So, as the valuations go up, so do the fees. It's not generated by a, a script or an equation that's handed to us. It's a, it's a, that, that goes up iteratively. It's really just based on that, the cost of the new construction and the cost of the addition.
So, it never goes up except for the value of the home?
Correct. The city, uh, the city is considering, for example, when we do our building permit fees, we, we charge a per square foot valuation on, for example, residential homes was ninety-nine dollars a square foot on average, and that's being bumped up to a hundred and one dollars by adopting a new two thousand and eighteen evaluation. So, we are, as part of this action tonight, considering a new rate per square footage of about a two-dollar increase. Plus or minus, some quote me on that, I'll go back and read it. Um, and that's just a reflective cost that increases across the construction. Uh, as far as who stands behind the work, the, the quality, obviously, the city will have record and do consistently give requests of records. With respect to buildings, um, commercial permits, for example, are required to be kept by the city for, residential permits are required to be kept for certain periods before they can be disposed. But I can tell you, since I've been here, since two thousand thirteen, we're not supposed to give records for residential construction. We frequently get those requests and do those to potential tenants. Uh, with regard to, again, the contractors or people building in town, I mean, the city is a, um, we are a lean staff. We, we attempt to hold builders accountable to the laws that, in which we've adopted, and we frequently do stop construction and back in the issue of stopper orders. So, with that regard, I think, uh, we are attempting to halt construction that's not meeting our standard at the time it's being constructed. Do we catch everything? I don't know. And as far as the question about the money going back into the electric term, it's sort of outside the scope of the conversation tonight, but, uh, it wasn't a half a million dollars, it was about two-hundred, plus or minus two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars of the electric fund that was going back into that electric fund. And for the record, the money that went back into that account, the state in that account in our cost of service analysis was preemptively done with that in mind of that happening as we're going through that process. So, the rate increases that are being proposed in light of respect to electric does include those funds we brought into that. I'm not sure my answer to all the questions, but it was a...
Are there any other comments on the fee schedule?
I'm sorry, how much did you say per square foot, Lisa?
I'd have to go look.
I thought you said, like, a hundred dollars per square foot? Hundred and...
Hundred.
Hundred and ninety-nine, thirty, a hundred and one.
For a permit? Is that what you're saying?
No, that's for the evaluation. So, that's how you come up with the evaluation.
Oh, okay. I thought it was for a permit.
No, no.
That'd be steep.
All right, if there are no further comments...
I'd be happy if you do that, I'll be happy.
The, uh, public hearing is out, boys.
That's still spreading, I have to say.
All of a sudden, I can't hear anything.
Well, all of a sudden, it got real quiet.
Oh, there we go. I think it's because I gotta say something wrong to hear.
Okay, moving on to number nine. Consider Resolution 2023 dash 015, a resolution to adopt revised fee schedule for services provided unregularly charged.
So in order, Mr. Mayor, in order to enact the new fees, you can only do so by adopting a resolution. And you'll see if this resolution is adopted, which you can choose to take action on tonight or can choose to disable. Does reflect the potential date on there, and if council chooses not to do that, obviously that may change. And we do try to reflect, and as the commitment that I mentioned earlier, that council has put on staff, you can see we go back to 2020 in our yearly review.
So does anyone make, want to make a motion on this resolution?
I make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2023 dash 015 to adopt revised fee schedule for services provided irregularly charged.
Motion's been made, do we have a second?
A second, yeah.
Motion been made, seconded. Ryan?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Val?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Okay, number 10, your streets. Consider quote to refurbish the sweeper box for the street department using Arba and General Fund dollars to replace.
So if you, I'll refer in this particular line, add into my memo, which, you know, I, at the last council meeting, gave you my estimated year-in amount, which shows the cost of around $110,000. And that $110,000 was specific, helping to the increases on the bulk revenue that we're seeing this year. So with that, typically, those funds will go into the general fund coffers and, and be used to help offset costs of large equipment. So this coming before you is for the benefit of, when council really gets here tonight, we, there was a resolution passed, uh, allocating of the dollars in specific areas, and I apologize, I didn't provide that in here. So, uh, with $30,000 being allocated to replacement of the sweeper box. And I'll remind council that, that all the dollars that were allocated through that resolution did look at it through the backdoor, so it had a offset cost to the town's fair with respect to those little purchases. We now have a quote, those, those funds are frozen for the last fiscal year, and just recently were released back to the departments to complete those expenditures. We are required to complete those expenditures by the end of the county year 2024. We have about $146,000 left of those funds. And coming before you is a request to spend those $20,000 through the resolution. However, the cost does exceed the amount that, uh, since when we first estimated this cost after 2020, I agree, that cost has increased another $4,400, $4,500. So we're asking for council to authorize some of the surplus funds to use for the additional expenditure, so it isn't necessarily expensive. And it does align with the, with the dollar prices of the resolution that is afforded council. We have to answer any questions.
Are there any questions or discussion on this?
What was the total cost going to be on the sweeper box?
The sweeper box, uh, that quote that we got came in at $34,400-ish. And I'm asking for authorization to spend up to $35,000 in case, uh, there's any additional costs that from the estimated go to the actual cost.
And how much are the dollars we're being used for this?
$30,000 were allocated for this purchase.
Okay.
I make a motion that we, um, buy our sweeper box, uh, for $35,000, or $30,000 coming from Arba dollars and the remaining $5,000 coming from the general fund expenses to replace for those, for those re-credit.
Motion seconded. Motion made and seconded. Adam?
Yes.
Val?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Number 11, this was, uh, for the recommendations for the vault contact or search. And, uh, we are going to table that because the request for proposal that was put out, the information that was on that was too specific to be able to really evaluate anybody that didn't have the exact criteria that was in that request for proposal. So we are going to table that and get back with the committee and try and come up along with our city attorney with a new request for proposal that will be correctly worded and go back up. Is that correct, Andrew Cade?
Yes, there were also some other procedural deficiencies with the RFP, including, um, it didn't meet the statutory requirement of having to have a, um, a scoring method that is capable of objective review. And so that, and the things you described, um, we need to address those before we can move forward.
Okay, so that is tabled. Number 12, vault, consider purchase of sprayer for the vault, costing amount of $1,175 from boundary tractor.
Mayor, um, I did talk with Ralph about this one, and he was unable to dispose any of the needs that we need to this fall because the sprayer wasn't working well. So this is for the owner to replace the, the new operator of the vault, of course, would be able to do so. So, uh, we've afforded this, um, new sprayer for a total cost of $1,175.
Discussion.
Make motion that we purchase spray for the vault, costing amount of, uh, 100, or $1,175 from boundary, boundary tractor.
Motion been made, we'll second it.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Adam?
Yes.
Val?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Okay, number 13, fire. We have a contract with the Cootie Tribe of Idaho for fiscal year 24 fire protection services.
Mayor, do you want me to?
Yes.
So during budget, the council looked at increasing the contract by around, it's just under 8%, it was about 7.7% increase. Uh, we produced that request to the tribe, which they go back, but they were incapable of making that adjustment. So the contract that's presented to you is presented to you as the existing amount. That was previous, the last contract update, I believe, was in 2018, changed, and, uh, so at this point, that's, that's been presented, that's the only contract.
So I guess due to the inability, according to the tribe, to be able to give us this amount because we're outside of the budget time, um, we have to decide whether or not we're going to stick with the contract we've had in place since 2018.
Is there a, is there any, right, a couple of times, I guess, outside of, right, $1,000?
That's a question that we will need to have answered for next year. So if we are seeking any increase, would we get into that before?
We have already advised them to plan for up to a 30% increase, and we have at least stipulated our greatest amount of likely to be listed. But they did request that a member of leadership need with their private. It expired on October.
So what is the current rate? The 22,150?
I believe that sounds right.
Yep.
Um, but in writing, we have $24,000.
It should be, it should be $23, or whatever.
Okay. The city shall receive compensation services divided under the contract in the amount of $24,000 in United States dollar.
I apologize, I'm not sure which one got in the record.
That's written in writing.
But the one that they've signed.
22,150. Can you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, so I believe you have an older version, Ryan, and I'm not sure how you got that, but the one that the tribe has signed. It's 22,150.
Okay, I mean, it's just, it was written two ways on it here. Okay. That's my answer, 22,150. Okay.
So, uh, we caught the error, the text reads 24,000, but the accuracy is 22, so we'll correct that for.
Okay, I just, it just continues to say what it says. Okay.
So the way I'm reading this, so two things on this, this has fired, not long before the service, in fact, the law, college, you know.
Right.
And then the other thing is the whole of the clause states that, uh, it's not timely renewed, you know, continued and services provided for type of privacy for a lot of most of the past year. So it's continued, correct?
Correct.
So I guess, can we just table this until we clock them?
Well, what was the clarity of the question that you have?
So, one of ours, when, when can we raise the rates? I guess it's one thing.
We've advised them that they should plan for that in the next fiscal year. And we need them to know 30% for this expectation. We'll probably see another 8% to 10% increase or 15% to 16% in the COVID situation. If we're not clear, I mean, we're not providing a provision. The only thing that they would provide was that I'm offering to come up with a charter. And I'd be happy to share with you those amounts, but it's changing.
So what you're saying is this amount, 22,150, should be up 30%.
No, we're just, we're just saying they should budget for that next year, so we don't run into the same issue.
Oh, so we're okay for this year, just for next year, 25?
Yes, we advise, I just, I guess, the mayor and I in discussions advise them to plan for that. And then, of course, we'll have to look at our actual costs and come back with that. But we wouldn't want to get back into that rhetorical cycle of not being able to increase the contract. Not providing them a fair warning about letting these essential contracts. And we will correct the, the written, I apologize.
Okay. So does anyone want to make a motion?
Your motion?
Yes.
I make a motion, we entered in a contract with the Cootie Tribe of Idaho for fiscal 24 fire protection services, and that amount would be $24,000?
20.
21, no, 21. Okay. So we get a bound of what?
22,150.
Okay, that'd be my motion.
A second, Dan.
Motion been made, seconded, any further discussion?
Just, I, I feel like it could be next, next October first, if it's a, if we come back at least, uh, next, um, fiscal year, I feel like it's going to be not, uh, stolen.
I believe it's, the mayor and I are on point with that, and lead to the makeup and the, I was going to say, the sooner the better.
Any other discussion? Val?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Okay, number 14. Consider ordinance 615, an annexation ordinance, annexing certain lands into the city limits and zoning such lands commercial on the official zoning map for first reading by title only. Certain lands are described as a plus or minus 10.95 acre tract located off Riverside Road owned by Cootie River Lumber Company. The request is associated with annexation file AN08-23.
Mr. Mayor, this is a follow-up to a public hearing that was held and had decision made. This is the documentation that was directed by staff to bring forth for consideration in that, in order to annex lands, you have to pass an ordinance, so this is a little instance of those lands. Uh, it's mentioned this is a file that's associated with, uh, annexation. That was a petition by the county. So I, I prevent to move the annexation warrants of the publication summary for consideration.
This looks like this is the rest of the law.
Yeah, for, for the new council members, background, there was an annexation application filed that went to funding and zoning, and then came forward to council, and there was another public hearing out there. That was done about a month ago, and the recommendation was to direct staff to bring forward the ordinance. This is a 10, it was a lemon, and it's probably adjacent to the existing.
It makes sense, it's a two. Any further discussion? I entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we ask ordinance 615, an annexation ordinance, annexing certain lands to the city limits and zoning such lands commercial on the official zoning map for first reading by title only.
Second. Motion been made and seconded, Ron?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Val?
Yes. I will read, but title only, uh, ordinance of the city of Orange, Spirit, and Municipal Corporation of the State of Idaho annexing certain lands situated in Boundary County. Idaho is adjacent and contiguous to the corporate limits of the city of Orange, Florida, establishing a zoning classification of such lands as commercial. Providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Boundary County assessor, the Boundary County reporter, and the Idaho State Tax Mission, as required by law, providing separate ability, providing for this ordinance shall be equal force to effect from an after-its passage of code on the location of the document.
Okay, number 15, consider suspension of rules and adopt ordinance 615 by title only and authorize publication of the ordinance summary.
Make a motion that we suspend rules and adopt ordinance 615 by title only and authorize publication of the ordinance.
Second, yeah.
We have a motion and second.
Mr. Mayor, can I clarify that was the ordinance summary, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Adam?
Yes.
Val?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Number 16, consider hiring Ken Robertson for carpentry work and other construction-related duties as needed and as directed at a rate of $35 per hour.
Mayor, uh, you guys probably remember, Ken retired a few months back, and, uh, he's been doing some intermittent construction work, and he could really use this help with different projects, and I think it's a, it's a. And I think he'd save us a fair bit of money. He's retired, so the proceeds went along, he worked twenty-nine thousand dollars a week for his benefits. So what we're showing here is that he made thirty-five dollars an hour in lieu of your benefits. But yeah, it'd have to be less than twenty thousand a week, or nineteen. So we have several projects in mind, if you'd like to do some. I think it would be, who benefits is, is probably is good. Well, div cost is pretty, very high of contractors to be such a stuff. And for the record, I've also included a job description that I, I put together today, and I submitted together for the record. So, any questions?
I make a motion we hire Ken Robinson for carpentry work and other construction-related duties as needed and directed at the rate of thirty-five dollars per hour.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Val?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Number seventeen, underwater. Consider contract change request approved with H two E for water system upgrades at the water plant.
Yeah, this is a fairly complicated project. We have a contract with H two E for about twenty thousand dollars to do upgrades to the hardware and software for our control system for the water plant. We also had to buy some other hardware along the way for our alarm system. So basically, it takes any props that we have at the plant and turns out into an alarm, sends it out to our guys so they can either respond with a tablet or computer, or they may have to come in to address an issue with the water plant or inner air, those stations, and tank problems, that sort of thing. What we found is that the hardware and software we bought for that alarming program called nine one, one nine one one required a lot more programming than by H two E to incorporate that. That would work. So anyway, they asked for an additional four thousand ninety-three dollars in after talking with Albert, our controls expert. So it's, it's certainly would have actually be a lot more expensive if we had him do it, just because it's, it's a lot of work. So I, I think it's a valid expense, and I do recommend it.
So the two programs didn't work together or something?
Yeah, we've had the, the old version of one nine one one we had was quite old. And so there's a lot of, there's a lot of differences between them. Yeah, and we have that.
So we're up to snuff on everything?
Yeah, and, and that's one good thing that I can tell you is that we unfortunately ran through without maybe all the updates that we should have paid for. I think it's, it's a lot like going from, you know, the nose side to the nose tip, to, you know, just making that progression. And we're at that point where we think they're spending money on all this stuff, so.
Do we have continuous updates or subscription or something like that?
Yes, yeah, we have an annual subscription now for one nine one one as well as the other software that will be updated. So that, that's one move that's going to cost us probably eight to ten thousand dollars a year, but we need to do it just to keep them, so.
Any other questions for Mike? I entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we approve the contract change with H two E for the water system upgrades at the water plant in the amount of four thousand ninety-three dollars.
Second. You have a motion and second? Ryan?
You're on mute.
You must be on mute.
I had a coffee expelled, so I had to, I know to say yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Val?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Number eighteen. Consider contract approval with EL automation for Riverside Road.
Yeah, so this is the next phase of our Riverside work, where we're trying to get ready for construction of the new Riverside Road outside of city limits to, to be, or River Creek. Our crew kind of came up with a, a less expensive way to do some of the moves, and that's to take some of the pole line and remove an actual new underground work. So what that would require is a board that goes across Riverside Road near Lake Road and all that. So we did solicit a quote for EL automation to do that board for us, and it'd be a six-inch board across Riverside Road that we can run the tree base and exender. And if you can imagine where you're coming on to Riverside at, at Mirror Lake Road, the crew after this job would be able to extend underground to the Walters' house as well as to the Rock Point. So all of that will now be underground, which is advantageous for a lot of reasons. Tree damage, and there, we, we'll go away with underground. Plus, we need, we needed to pay a contractor to actually move those poles. And now our guys with this board would actually be able to do that with themselves so we can actually do the underground portion over there on that side of the road. So I think it's going to reduce the overall project cost when we're, and all said, the Riverside project. So anyway, I think this is a, a pretty, pretty good price for a, a board. And I guess it ups here to, to speak if you.
If there's any questions.
I guess my other question is, it's that I saw this here.
Yeah, you can, you just have to, you know, there has to be some productive measures to be done. And we do have to still submit the, an application with the county for any gross report, so that, that's for.
Any other questions for Mike or Eric?
Second.
I entertain a motion.
I got one more. I make a motion that we approve the contract with EL automation for four thousand dollars to complete the road board on Riverside Road.
Second.
That too.
Ron?
Yes.
Val?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
That being the last item on the agenda, the meeting is now adjourned.